Back and final reading. It is an ordinance of the City of Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, establishing the operating millage rate for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida pursuant to the 2021-2022 city budget in accordance with Chapter 200 of Florida statutes and establishing the debt service millage rate for debt service on the general obligation bonds approved by the electorate, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. And for the record, and for the Department of Revenue's benefit, the city's operating millage rate shall be set at 5.6690, which is greater than the rollback rate of 5.4333 mils by 4.34 percent. And the proposed debt service millage rate is 0.4159. The law requires an independent and separate public hearing on BH1, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. I need a motion?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Seifel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion on the motion. There are none. City Attorney, call, I mean, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. For the record, the permanent number for the, for the millage ordinance is 1972, the year I was married. And it's a very special item.
That was a good year.
It was a very good year. And still is, actually. So with your permission, Mayor and Commissioner, BH2 follows if they may read.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item number two is the actual budget. It is a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance, number 2021-18, on second and final reading. It is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 and adopting the five-year capital improvement program for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida in accordance with Section 5.08 of the city's charter, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for effective date, public hearing required. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Seifel. Is there a second?
No.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion. Call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor and Commissioner, for the record, the permanent number for those paying attention to the record, including the folks in Tallahassee, it is 1973. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we can roll right into our regular meeting, City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner. The item on the record for this special meeting agenda, beginning with SM1, as a follow-up to item number 20 on the City Commission agenda of Wednesday, September 13th, the item reads as follows from Commissioner Seifel. It is Commissioner Seifel's item, moves to direct the City Attorney's Office and the city administration to take actions regarding legally authorized temporary and permanent limitations on the use of Northwest Fourth Street, including, if necessary, preparation of ordinances or resolutions. That's item on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seifel?
Yes, Mayor.
You did a great job last night.
Thank you.
Did a great job. Well-planned meeting, very informative. And I see people from forth to here, Lisa, everybody's here. We need to move, and move now. It's time.
We do.
It's time.
We do.
So I just, there was a couple of things brought up last night that weren't factual, and I just want to make sure that we have the record. I am the chair of the NPO.
Thank goodness.
Third year in a row.
Thank goodness. We like that.
And when you do that, and School Board member Patty Good is the vice chair, and when you do that, you have influence over 31 cities that all want something with their cities. So we bring up Pembroke Pines all the time. We bring them up all the time. And what happened was, we brought up Pembroke Road. And I want to say, some people last night were saying it's tabled, it's not going to happen. Well, guess what? Pembroke Pines is going to happen. It's, it's been funded to 40 to 50 million dollars. We're waiting now for the county to plan it and move it. So what you heard on social media, it's done. It's done to the fact that it's moving now for completion. Just wanted to make that fact for the record. All right, City Commissioner Seifel, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And, and again, yes, I, I, I am, I am very proud of the initiative that was taken last night to start this. And again, it's an initial initiative. We have, we know that we have a good number of, of issues, traffic flow issues throughout our entire city. And as City Manager did say at the meeting last night, we, we kind of started in the West only because that was really where we were hearing the most issues being brought, you know, brought forward. That certainly does not mean that, at least, at least my intent is this, does not mean that that's the only place that we're looking at going, because it is all over our entire city. And I just, again, want to say thank you to my colleagues for, you know, for being there and for being supportive, you know, of this, of this initiative. It is, it is truly long overdue. There, there have been things in the past that were talked about, there were things in the past that were sort of promised. And however, whatever happened, the, the ball got dropped and residents were just left felt, were, were left feeling like, my city doesn't really listen to me, my city doesn't really take what I say in, in earnest, and my city doesn't do things to protect me, protect, to protect, to protect me and to protect my quality of life in, in Pembroke Pines. And that's a very serious issue for, for me, and I think for my colleagues, that, that we certainly always strive to provide the best, look at what's reality and, and look for that quality of life, because I think that's one thing certainly that sets Pembroke Pines aside from other, from, not that other communities aren't great, I don't mean to say that, but I think we strive really hard to protect that quality of life. And we certainly, right now, have, have an issue that is very negatively impacting that quality of life for so many of us that are, that are out there. And it was very evident last night that it's not just, it's not just that, what we think of like the parents or the residents, but there were a number of business folks that spoke up last night as well that are feeling some real negative impact as well. And, and when that happens, that usually means they've lost some money out of their pocket, you know? It's costly to businesses, and that should never happen. That should never happen for them. So coming out of the discussions that have been going on, and I have spent over the, probably now over the last month or four or five weeks or so, really having discussions with City Manager and with City Attorney and, and with our engineers and, and to try to really, to understand, understand first what the problems are out there and then what options are available to us to give some remedy to those, to those issues that are there, whether it be a, a permanent, whether it be a temporary, but whatever it is, we need to do something. So I would like to, actually, I see Mr. Cirillo is here tonight, and I would like for him, if he would, to come up and sort of talk a little bit about some of the, some of the conversations that we've had and what might be some options that we, that we could work on. And, you know, again, it was said last night, it, it's not just us, there are a lot of agencies that we are going to have to work with, and they, we all need to be on that same page and, and contribute somehow, however we contribute. So, and some, and that's good, but sometimes that causes, you know, you got to turn left instead of right all the time or something. So we got to figure out how to make all that work. And I think that that's something Mr. Cirillo would like to talk about tonight. So thank you.
Could have pushed the start button.
Push, the one that says push the talk, right?
Right.
Yes.
Mike Cirillo with the City Attorney's Office. What we did, we were contacted to assist in working through this issue, so I wanted to give a little bit of background on, on where we are with the roads in the city. This is a city road, but there still are some things that we have to look at. You have to look at state law. State law provides for uniform traffic regulation, and there's a statute that lists those things that cities, local governments can regulate. If it's not on that list, you can't do it. And that's, if you remember that from 12, 13 years ago, all the things we had to do for red light cameras because it wasn't on that list. So we have to look at that list and see what we can or cannot do. Then we have, the second thing is, those, even items on that list that look like, it looks pretty clear you can do it, you have to look and see whether it's been interpreted a certain way. For example, the Attorney General's Office has given some interpretations on some of those provisions that would, you would think would go contrary to how they read, but yet they have said, you know, for example, older AGOs, you know, about gated roads or not gated roads, or one-way traffic or not one-way traffic, you have to do it under certain conditions with certain facts. We, we were looking at those, too. The third component we have to look at is we have our agreement with the county. They try, they handle our traffic control devices. So they look at those same parameters as well. They look at the state statute, they look at the AGOs, they also look at the manual for uniform traffic control devices. If it's not in the manual, it's not covered under state law. And if it's not covered under state law, it's not going to be allowed under the county's agreement with the city, which is a longstanding agreement. They do all the signage, they, they handle all that, striping, et cetera. I know it's been a topic of conversation, other subjects, but that's one of the topics we've had to look at. So with all that in mind, our thought processes and what we can do to handle a particular traffic situation also goes to what you want to do on a temporary or a permanent basis. The statute has a provision that allows for temporary or experimental regulations to handle emergencies or unique circumstances that may come up. So you can, for example, do something temporary to see if that addresses the immediate concern while you figure out maybe a permanent solution to it. It may not be something that is traditional, but it still has to be consistent with, you know, the other parameters that I just described. So in looking at possible options for this particular situation, we've been made aware of some of the things that have been discussed, those really have to be discussed among, you know, engineers and planners and whatnot, that what works and what functions in a certain area. And we've taken those thought processes and been in touch with the, I know our engineer talked with the, the county engineer, and the initial reaction from the county engineer was, you know, no, I don't think we can work with you on that. But we did reach out to the county attorney's office, and they did talk with their engineers. And I'm, I'm not sure if the message wasn't communicated properly, but when we communicated, they said, yes, we will work with the city. If you find a solution, we will work with you on what we need to do on the, on the signage and the installation on that. But what they need from us is what's covered in the interlocal agreement is a resolution of the City Commission that provides for that direction so they can go then and implement it. So they wouldn't take, for example, an email from the engineer saying, go put this sign up here, or the police chief or something. So it has to come to you. So, you know, thought processes, whether, you know, there's a limitation on traffic during certain times, direction of traffic in certain times, through traffic on certain times, those are all concepts that probably could be worked through, but the direction needs to come from you all and the engineers on what works. We put that into the resolution, we get that to the county, and their engineers start working with our engineers to make it happen. We also have an enforcement component, you know, an experimental regulation type thing. We'll have to provide in the resolution, you know, some sort of enforcement. We have a general traffic code, Chapter 70, that provides for, I think, $25 fine if you're on that. And we're thinking we may look for that as a temporary, you know, enforcement mechanism on that. And, you know, you got to coordinate with the police department for enforcement. You know, visibility is going to be important when you first put these signs up. And so all those things are what we looked at, and we're here tonight to offer any assistance we have, we can.
Mr. Mayor, if I can quickly, to just supplement one thing, if I can. One of the objectives of tonight's discussion from the City Attorney's Office is to find a mechanism to begin the implemented legal discussion with the county, with the county itself. And the way to get there is under the statute and under our traffic engineering agreement. We need to bookmark your request with the county traffic engineers and the county attorney's office that says, this city has an interest in diligently and in good faith pursuing certain short-term potential limited options, temporary options which are engineeringally consistent and are supportable. To the extent that we are meeting this evening in a special meeting, the next regular commission meeting is not until October the 6th, that's the first meeting of October. You have, on certain occasions, given the nature of certain activities, perform what's called a draft and adopt. We could essentially assign a resolution number at your direction, if you so direct us by majority vote to do so, to draft a resolution which would essentially follow the statute, which is 316.008, Michael, correct? Florida statutes, which gives these
Yes.
subpart options that are probably not known to many people, but we did the homework and they do exist, and the county acknowledged them, to begin the conversation and the implementation of whatever short-term, temporary, mid-range options administration can seek to implement through your guidance to work on some of the traffic issues that have become predominant and difficult during this COVID-19 environment. They're not permanent fixes, but they are interim, temporary, and otherwise given, statutorily provided options that will give you at least a bookmark with the county to get the ball rolling, particularly given your, your town hall meeting of last evening and the actions taken by the commission at the last regular commission meeting where the conversation was begun publicly.
Thank you. And, and so, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, question.
So, thank you, Mr. Cirillo, for, no, stay there, because I have. No, no. Turn your light back on. Thank, but, but thank you. I think you were, you were pretty, pretty clear on, on, on what's going on. So you mentioned unique circumstances, and I certainly think that what we were discussing last night at the town hall meeting, we, we're right in the middle of unique circumstances. Is, is that not your feeling also?
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes. Well, what I understand from the circumstances is that this traffic has been brought to a head because of the change in pattern of behavior of taking kids to and from school because of COVID. And yet it's something that, is something that, that would appear to qualify for that.
Okay. And clearly, I think it was very clear last night from not only what, what residents spoke of, but also pictures and videos that Mr. Kennedy was able to show to everyone last night, that this really, besides being unique circumstances, clearly is a real health and safety issue, because there, there are, there are some real safety issues out there with, with this traffic and how it's not flowing as it, as it, as it should. So I think that that, that that in itself makes it almost that, that we have, we really have no choice but to work quickly and immediately finding some help, whether it be initially as a, as something that's temporary and we work on, but we get some help, you know, moving forward.
Correct.
So this whole concept, City Attorney, of the draft and adopt, I, I would think that that would be something that we certainly should utilize this evening. And Mayor, at the appropriate time, I would like to make a, a motion that we request an ordinance be, be brought to us.
Resolutional.
I'm sorry, resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Be brought to, I meant to say, be brought to us immediately by City Attorney and that we act upon it this evening, because I don't think we can afford to waste any more days, and I don't think our residents should have to be inundated any longer than what's necessary.
Is that, is that your motion?
I think, I think
That's kind of almost what my motion is, but when, when you get to that point, Mayor.
Commissioner Seifel? I think now is the appropriate time to make the motion.
I think I just made the motion.
The second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Seifel? Commissioner Castillo?
City Attorney, the, the, the resolution hasn't been written yet, but if you were to give the average Pembroke Pines resident, not that there is one, I think they're all above average, but if, if you were to give the, the typical citizen in our city a synopsis so that they could understand it on lay terms, what is it that this resolution would actually achieve?
City Attorney? May I respond, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Commissioner. It will, it will make several findings. It will, as my law partner, Mr. Cirillo, has indicated, and as Commissioner Seifel has indicated, and as has been discussed on the record in, at the last commission meeting, there is a unique traffic problem in the city, or several of which occur in multiple locations, not all of which are occasioned by COVID-19, but which are, which are amplified by COVID-19. And because of that, people are, are hurting, as, as the case may be, or being impacted by these traffic activities that are unfortunately, I don't want to say we're out of control, but are certainly in, in difficulty in control, the consequence of which is that we have, the city has, a long-term traffic engineering agreement, which Mr. Cirillo has referred to earlier. We have some other issues with that document from prior discussions which don't impact tonight's discussion, but it is a process specifically in that document that when there are such unique circumstances, and if we do follow the state law that talks about short-term limited activities, you have to start the, the, the ball rolling. And the only way to start the ball rolling is to adopt a document, a resolution, which we call a draft and adopt, which would assign tonight a number to it, which we would draft, and would essentially let the citizenry of our city know that this commission is serious about the issue, is committed to doing something about it, and will work with both short-term and mid-range options, not just for Fourth Street, but any other location where there may be implications, where there may need to be, no through traffic on a temporary basis or regulated hours of operation that are currently not in place. But we can't prepare the signs, they're prepared by the county, county staff. But you can't get there until you adopt a resolution to get the county to pay attention.
So is, 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 I just want to be clear on what we're doing. I, I, I support the, the motion, I have some additional questions, but, so to be clear, the contents, the specific activities under the resolution, those are going to be subject to ongoing discussion with the, with the traffic engineers, and then you're going to come back with
Reports.
The specific, this is going to be closed, this is going to be open, this is going to be this, this is going to be that, a sign is going here. Those specifics are going to be in the resolution
Mike.
And will be developed between now and the 6th?
If we've got some, Mike Cirillo again, if we've got the, the thoughts that we want to consider and have the engineer do, if it's feasible, we will put those, we could put those in the adopt and draft as well. So if there are some direction from the commission based on what you may have heard last night at, at the, at the town hall meeting or recommendations you might get this evening of certain things for a north one location, Northwest Fourth Street, for example, so let's just start there. The resolution for Northwest Fourth Street, this is what we're going to authorize.
What, what is, what is it that we're going to authorize on Northwest Fourth Street?
Well, that
I want it on the record.
Well, that, that's what I'm going to suggest, that the commission has to give us direction on based on the recommendations. We've talked about some of the options.
So you want, you want it to come from us?
We have
You want it to come from the engineers? This is, this is where I wasn't clear with what you said.
I would, I would assume that the engine, if the engineer is here, would give you these, but the ideas that have been discussed is to restrict through traffic on that road during certain school hours on certain school days.
So the no-through-traffic resolution?
Commissioner Castillo, let him finish, please.
That, that's one thing that the commission could direct. The commission could direct, and it seems to be the most, you know, I guess straightforward way of handling this for now. But, you know, you could make the road one-way at certain times and certain hours, but that could be an inconvenience to the residents in the area.
You also, you also mentioned enforcement, we have to, that has to be part of
Yeah. And then, you know, there's a lot of signage that goes with one-way traffic, because you put, you know, in addition, you have to put do not enter at certain hours and whatever. But, but I'm just saying, those are, those are, those are the type of things that we've been mulling over in our office as far as, and with the county attorney's office, you know, the, you know, the no-through-traffic. There was, just a little bit of background, the reason that, that, back in '04, there was no AGO that said, oh, there's no signage in the uniform traffic manual for no-through-traffic, so therefore you can't do a no-through-traffic provision. Well, in '09, there's a template for a no, or neighbor, or local traffic only, or no-traffic, similar type signage is now in the '09 manual. And combine that with the fact that what you're considering here is temporary to start, those are all factors that the county came and said, yes, we will work with you, even though our initial response was, there's an AGO out there that says it.
Okay.
Things have changed. So, but that, but I'm trying, you know.
This is going a little further than, than what my question was.
Okay.
So let me just, let me just switch gears. Mr. Dodge, I know that you've been meeting with staff with, with respect to Northwest Fourth Street. You and I have had some email exchanges, staff are asking for, the residents are asking for the closure of that street to, to through traffic. What is your recommendation with respect to Fourth Street? As we get ready to move this resolution forward, I need to understand, what is it that specifically that's being recommended for Northwest Fourth Street?
Mr. Dodge?
Mayor and Commissioner, I think the Assistant City Attorney has stated on the record different possibilities or different avenues as to how you can restrict traffic. Regarding the closure of a street, that's another legal review I think they could address. And I'm not, I do not have the answer for that one.
Well, the
The issues that we had looked at were those that had as a temporary nature what you could do to make it very difficult for cars to pass through on Northwest Fourth Street, especially during school times. But there's challenges to that. The challenges are basically an enforcement. You can do a sign up, but will somebody pay attention to it? There are other options that the city attorney, the city engineer would be looking at as well, but they all have to be coordinated with Broward County according to the traffic code and, and regulations. If, in fact, the community is requesting to close that road, that's certainly an option or not, or that's certainly a position the City Attorney's Office can look at from a legal perspective, it could, could be done. Or it could be a temporary closure, or if there's some way it could be practical to close it during certain hours of day on school days only. And those are things that we, we also are looking at. But a permanent closure, I really have to defer to the City Attorney on as to any possibilities for that.
So, so let me just, if, if I can, so I, I think it's real important that, that we take this step. In fact, in a second, I'm going to ask about emergency powers during, during COVID and whether those need to be invoked in, in, in connection with, with, with this. But I, I need to, I need more specificity. Maybe the city engineer has a recommendation. What specifically are you recommending regarding Fourth Street? There is a range of, of, of possible actions that can be taken. Is it that you, you haven't formed a recommendation yet and you want to bring that recommendation back to us when the resolution is read? Is it that, what, what, what specifically, I mean, if that's the answer, if, if, if what you need is additional time to bring back a specific recommendation to us, I can understand that answer, but I'm not hearing that either.
City Engineer?
What is the recommendation for Fourth Street?
Do you want to come up, City Engineer?
We don't have a, Mr. Mayor, I don't know at this point that the, the staff has a specific
Okay.
recommendation for Fourth Street. We have heard from the community. They certainly are impacted by it, and maybe this evening, since members of Fourth Street are here, maybe they could get up and express what their thoughts would be on what some remedy would be to assist them during these school hours.
That would, that, that, that would help. Let's get to that in a second. Here's my last question. It, it goes to Sam. Sam, wouldn't it be, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to what Mr. Cirillo explained, it almost sounds like we're declaring a, a traffic emergency linked to COVID. Is that more or less what, what I'm hearing?
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
In, in a way, yes. But what we're doing is, there, there, just as a parenthetical, the governor has eliminated the statewide emergency.
Okay.
It, it's gone. There is a periodic countywide emergency, but
Right.
that relates to other things, not these kinds of things. We're getting in the door through a statute, 316.008, which provides for temporary fixes. I can read you some, if I may, just really quickly. The statute speaks about the following things. Adopting and enforcing such temporary or experimental regulations as may be necessary to cover emergencies or special conditions. Further, the, the statute speaks about designating and regulating traffic on play streets. We don't know what play streets are, but it's in the statute. Designating any street as a through street or designating any intersection as a stop or yield intersection, that's in the statute. By the way, the statute governs cities. It's specifically titled Powers of Local Authorities, Designating Particular Highways or Roadways for Use by Traffic Moving in One Direction. And th, those are the subparts that we have researched that
So the reason, the reason I was asking you about the emergencies is, as we get, as we get along with, with this discussion, it may be of, of assistance to the city to have a predicate against which we can take certain actions like waiving procurement policies
Yes.
in order to get things done quickly, reopening old contracts, like, for example, you've got, you've got a, an engineer and a, and a contractor that did 196, the extension of Pembroke Road from 19, from 184th to Pines Boulevard, including 196. For all I know, they're available to complete the, the project. And all we have to do is open up the old contract. We may have to waive procurement if we want to get this done quickly. And if we want to move fast, and this commissioner wants to move fast, we may, we may need the[1778.53] and this commissioner wants to move fast, we may, we may need the predicate in order to do that, in order to get it done, so I'm asking whether or not you are sort of leaning in the direction of saying this is a special condition, or whether or not you would recommend that this be a traffic, uh, 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 emergency pursuant to COVID or any other emergency, uh, uh, um, that we might have, I want to see this thing handled as quickly and efficiently as possible, and I want to remove as much red, red tape as, as, as we can from, from, from that process.
Okay.
So, do you have a thought on that now, or is that something you want to contemplate between now and the, and the next time we meet, or?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think this is a, it's all in play, Commissioner, you're, you're accurate in your analysis, um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a play that's not yet ended, it's beginning as we speak.
Okay.
And the way that you get the igniter, and that's not a negative word, that's a starting point.
Yeah.
You know, we found a statute that no one's paying attention to because frankly, they were, they didn't need to, now we do, um, having looked at that, and I commend my, my law partner for having done the homework to find such a statute, which by the way is indisputable, it exists, um, and that was part of the conversation we had with the county attorney and with their folks at the county traffic engineering department, so tonight would be the starting point, the resolution, if you so desire to, to elect us to prepare a draft and adopt, would simply begin the conversation with the county and would be open to fur- further conversation that we need to have, because the experts have to figure out the answers from an engineering perspective.
Okay, I get it. So my last, my last question is actually, uh, more procedural.
Yes, sir.
Uh, will there be an opportunity at this meeting, or will, will I have to wait until the sixth to have general comments about the plan that is being developed? We talked yesterday about beginning the process, and it was an excellent meeting, beginning the process toward a, uh, a traffic master plan, not just for West Pines, but ultimately citywide, if, if I understood the, uh, the, the, the direction of it, will there be opportunity to comment on that this evening, or is that a, uh, a, a, a discussion that is reserved for, uh, for October?
The mayor's honor, I think the best answer is that that's a topic that has to be reserved for discussion, because the resolution, if you direct us to, to do a draft and adopt this evening, will open up the legal door with the county, and then it's subject to refinement by the commission through your city manager and through professionals that will help to dictate on a, on a piece by piece basis how you get to the answer.
So further discussion, Mr. Mayor, about, about, about some of the things that we heard will be, will, will take place in October, not tonight?
The city attorney?
Then that would be the objective.
Okay, okay.
And I'm, I'm.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, is there anything preventing the city administration to pop the blister and open up the, uh, parks, uh, for immediate relief or queuing that was presented last night? I don't want to delve into the October meeting, but it's a question, I was, we don't need a traffic enforcement agreement to open up our parks for queuing, do we?
City Attorney?
Mr. Manager.
Uh, manager?
Yes, um, as far as, uh, those schools where we can open our parks, no, we can do that administratively, uh, that doesn't require any of the work, uh, we did, I did create a committee, uh, this morning, we did meet on a number of the, uh, topics that were, uh, brought up last night and suggested, suggestions from the public, uh, we are moving forward with that, and we are, uh, scheduling meetings, uh, both with Somerset and other schools that, uh, we have some suggestions, uh, that we're hoping to provide immediate relief, because as you know, uh, constructing roadways, widening them through our process does take time, and I think the suggestion of allowing us to waive some of those processes and instead of preparing specs and bringing them back here, you ultimately will see the documents, we could speed up the process, and I think, I think that's, uh, very important. Regardless, regarding opening old construction, uh, bids, uh, I would have to rely on the city attorney to respond to that, if that's doable or not, but some of those are, are pretty old and the pricing is.
Same, Major, I, 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 I appreciate the recap, but the, these, I'm trying to keep the meeting to, on, on topic to where we're at here, okay?
Okay.
Um, if we can open up the parks, thank you for making those efforts, I want to publicly state, um, I've already privately thanked, uh, uh, our, our city engineer, Carl Kennedy and, and Mike Stamp for an outstanding presentation last night, just outstanding, uh, clear and concise, um, and, um, Mayor, I don't know, do I see any representatives from, uh, either Somerset or the Broward County School Board here in the room?
No.
Okay, so, one of the things that I took the opportunity seeing the, um, representatives from Somerset last night is I, um, I said, look, if, if we had an issue within our Pembroke Pines Charter campus traffic issues where Pines Charter parents were cutting through, um, people's driveways, driving on people's lawns, uh, blocking people from going to work, just being absolutely disrespectful, it would, um, be easy for me to ask our superintendent to remove that student from our school, problem solved, you can't come into the city and act like idiots, that doesn't cost seven million dollars, that is a principal who cares deeply about their community, now that being said, Somerset is an outstanding community partner, outstanding, two years ago, not even two years ago, a little, little over a year and a half ago, uh, they did a toy drive, a, a toy drive, and the mayor and I flew over to the Bahamas and delivered those toys to, to kids after Hurricane Dorian, there are always in life, twenty percent of the, twenty percent create eighty percent of the problems, and what we know about busing is that you can't get buses inside of two miles, and you're certainly not going to get a bus from Hollendale, or from Weston, or from Miami-Dade, and if we actually take a look at the student population and where they're coming from, you're going to see where the problem is.
Point of order, Mayor?
I have a point of order, Commissioner Casille.
I don't want to cut off the, the, the commissioner. Commissioner, your microphone, please.
What he's saying is important.
Angelo, your microphone.
Can't hear you, can't hear you, sorry.
I didn't want to cut off the commissioner because what he's saying is important, but I specifically asked in order to govern my own commentary this evening, whether or not we were going to discuss, uh, matters not related to the resolution that's in front of us today, and I was told that those were going to be, um, discussed in October, so, um, which, which is it going to be, are we going to all, uh, have the opportunity to discuss, uh, everything that was, that was brought up yesterday, or are we going to stick to the resolution, I just need to know what the rules are, so I can govern myself.
Mr. City Attorney? I think, I think we should be free to discuss anything we want tonight.
Okay, well, that's what I asked before.
But Mayor, but Mayor, we change, we.
City Attorney?
Mayor, that's your prerogative as the chair unless you're, unless the body would overrule you, but at the end of the day, that's up to the chair.
Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, as, as far as relating to, um, a master traffic plan, that's off the table for tonight, it's off the table tonight, my comments were specifically about Fourth Street, because guess what, the school that I just mentioned is causing the problem, that's specifically on the item, and they're not here tonight, I am disappointed, I am tremendously disappointed that they're not here tonight, it's disrespectful, disrespectful at the least to not even be on the phone to call in, now, part of the things that I can, that I can see, um, City Attorney, is that we have, um, on the east side of, of town, uh, we have gates that open and close during certain hours of the day, and it's done by staff in order to avoid people from breaking, can we, um, silence our phones, please, thank you, we have those gates for people who break laws, who just don't want to follow the rules, and staff opens and closes them, um, I've had some discussions with residents who have been impacted on Fourth Street, I will let them speak because I hope we can get the resolution tonight of what they want in the resolution, it's okay to ask for more and be told you can't do it, so I think everything's on the table, but realistically, um, during school hours, following the Broward County school calendar is the most you're going to be able to get, if it's a teacher planning day, the road, it can't, it can't be restricted, that's not temporary, um, I spoke with Somerset regarding bus ridership, they made a commitment of somewhere around forty percent, four years, um, three, four years ago, whenever it was, and they're currently in the low thirties, at the last meeting, I asked the city manager if Broward County School Board has provided any bus ridership, and we're still waiting for that answer, so to Commissioner Cyple's point last night, we need other agencies to cooperate.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a simple request, the, um, City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't want to talk about traffic mitigation beyond what has been advertised, okay, I'm not comfortable talking about other areas, however, the Pembroke Pines West Campus has to be looked at immediately, if you look at, um, I took the time to go out there and you will see swale with dead grass, and you know where the parents are, with respect to, and I see, um, I see our PD is here tonight, I don't want to put you on the spot and blindside you with it, but when it comes to, um, traffic enforcement, there is, there's a sense that there is a timeline of how long you can block a road if you're getting in the car line, I don't know if that's fifteen minutes or two hours, what I heard yesterday, which is bona fide garbage, you're lining up that long, bang with a ticket, all day long, um, enforcement at twenty-five dollars isn't going to correct the problem, expulsion from the school will, that will certainly get their attention, and if that means that we have to implement that policy first, if, if our charter school parents aren't following the rules, then we have to lead by example, we can't have it both ways, we can't have, we can't have Chapel Trail suffer, and then somewhere else in the city, we're causing the problem, it's not, it's not fair, so Mayor, what I'd like to see done, if possible, what I'm hearing is this draft and, and, and pass, and waiting till October, but the city attorney a few hours ago indicated that, uh, he's going to be asking for a shade session on the thirtieth, which is next week, there's absolutely no reason, unless the city attorney needs more time for drafting, that we can't bring this back on the thirtieth, if we're going to get it on, let's get it on, why are we going to wait another two weeks?
City Attorney?
Mayor and Commissioner, I meant quickly, I, I did email you all today, given the preparation for trial in the Pembroke Pines Southwest Ranches litigation case, without getting into any detail of any kind, I was at the end of this meeting under the prerogative as the chief legal officer, going to request a shade meeting on the thirtieth of September at the request of our special counsel, Bruce Johnson, just to add insult to injury, you realize that you can't just have a shade meeting, you have to have a special meeting, followed by a shade meeting, followed by a closing in a, in a public session, so Commissioner Schwartz is accurate, if, if you, if you mo-, by motion authorize a shade meeting, there'll be a special meeting to precede it and to end it, so there, if you directed us to prepare a resolution and bring it back at that meeting, we would do that.
So certainly, Mayor, if we can push this up a week to the advantages of our residents, I want to do that, now, there is the possibility that we don't have the shade session, and so under those circumstances, City Attorney, how much time do you think your office needs to actually draft, and I, and I say this because the mayor can call a special meeting within forty-eight hours' notice, and we can get this thing pushed up to maybe Tuesday of next week, we don't have to wait till the thirtieth, so how much time do you, how much time do you need to perfect a document, at least a working framework that the county will say, you know what, yeah, we, we're good, but we're good with, this is a start, and kind of leave an open end, if we need to ask for more, we ask for more.
Okay. City Attorney?
My, my best answer is that we will do our level best to prepare a document a- as direct about the commission, there's one component which is missing, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a PE, nor is Mike Cirillo or Jacob Horowitz, they're really qualified lawyers, but we don't know the answer to all the engineeringly sound options that we can't create without the benefit of direction, so the answer is we can provide and create a framework resolution that follows the traffic engineering agreement with the county, and follows the uniqueness of the statute that I cited, which no one has paid attention to except the city, by the way, um, and to do so, we could do so, we could do it by next week, they at least have a framework to fill in the gaps where you would direct us, given the engineering.
Allow me, allow me, if, my interpretation is that we're, we are not asking the county for a specific, we're asking them for a working product, because it's temporary of nature.
Correct.
So if, so if the resolution were to include a sign off by the city engineer, traffic review, dot, 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 that gets us there, without having, uh, without having a specific in the reso?
So for example, if, if the city engineer were to say something to the effect that he, he gave me some notes earlier, uh, but no right turn during school hours on fourth at two oh eight, that's a, that's an engineering, um, concept which we could draft into a document, if that's a concept which is supportable by the commission, and ask the, the county to help, help us to perfect that.
Okay, um, not to put the city attorney on the spot, you've already, you've already expressed that the, um, city engineer and the traffic people need to provide you some support, do you believe that you have enough right now to move forward? You just mentioned one example of a right turn.
Given by the strap the R.C. engineer need, that's as a, as a talking point, correct.
Uh, is there, uh, Mr. Cirillo, can you come up? Uh, Mr. Cirillo, is, have you, you're, you're, you're taking point on this, you've had discussions with the, um, city engineer and spoken with Broward County Traffic, is there anything that, um, uh, that, that's, that the residents are asking for, um, that's out of bounds? Based upon your review that it has to meet certain qualifications, is there any, is there anything that's out of bounds?
Well, I, I guess I'm at a little bit of a disagreement, so I wasn't at the workshop last night, so I don't know everything that they ask for, perhaps, but, but like, um, the temporary things we discussed before, I don't think there's anything out of bounds, a permanent closure is not anything you would do by resolution.
Excuse me?
So.
Mr. Casille, Mr. Casille?
Ho- hold on, uh, City Attorney, Mayor has the floor.
Hey, Mr. Cirillo, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, by understanding after talking to the county attorney's office, is that anything the engineers agree on? Um, it's doable.
Okay, can you define engineers, is that our engineers?
Our engineer and the county engineer.
Okay, so we make a recommendation and they say nobody, what happens then?
Well, then, we're not going to be able to do it under the agreement, um, whether we do something on our own and take our chances as far as the forcibility, um, um, you know, that, that would be a different, that would be a different thing to consider, but I will tell you that my conversation with the county attorneys is, if you tell us what you want to do, we will work with you to get it done, so if you tell us tonight, no right turns on red, I mean, sorry, right, no right turns on these streets and these hours, that we, that's a matter of wordsmithing in a resolution can be done fairly quickly, that gets to the county, uh, uh, attorney's office and engineers, and I'll work with their engineer to get those signs manufactured and installed.
Okay.
If we say another sample, same thing.
So now, now that we have that kind of settled on the table, Mayor, and I'm, I'm going to, I want to.
It's always been on the table.
No, I want to close my remarks, when the residents come forward, what they ask for, we put in the reso, let the county say no, that's all I'm saying, because I'm supporting them, and I'm, I'm expecting that our city engineer is going to support our residents, so let the county tell us that we can't do it, so I think whatever they come up with, reasonable, within the bounds of temporary, put it on the table, stick it in the reso, and based on that, City Attorney, you have your draft. the table, stick it in the reso, and based on that, City Attorney, you have your draft. And then it's just a matter of the mayor calling the special meeting. Am I correct?
Generally, that's correct.
So we can get this done well in advance of October the sixth.
May I respond, Mayor?
Please.
That's our expectation.
Thank you.
May I just give one caveat, though, to the Commissioner?
Vice Mayor.
It's kinda, uh, if I may, just real quickly, it's kinda like, it's kinda like rollover minutes. You're not, you're not beholden only to what's in that resolution. That's not this commission's intention, because issues and options and items are a continuing process.
Right.
And that's, and I don't let, want the record to reflect that we do a resolution at one point, having you done. One and done, not even close legally or operationally. It's a moving target, and, and that's why it has to be corralled by the professionals that can make the decisions and make the recommendations to the manager and to the commission on a piece-by-piece basis, case-by-case basis. Excuse me.
But, but Mayor, that's, that's so important, to say we have to start somewhere.
Hold on. Hold on. Vice Mayor, direct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I gotta say that, uh, I, I was, uh, very thankful and very happy to have attended that, uh, meeting last night. Um, I wanna, I wanna speak to the community for a moment here. You know, the community did a, a wonderful job. You know, they showed appreciation for our police officers and what they're doing several times. They, um, thanked this body for giving them the opportunity to, um, voice their concerns. And I can say that I walked away from there feeling enriched. You know, I have a, a much different thought process on, on, on these type of problems. I heard some very well-thought-out, uh, comments, solutions, recommendations, and, um, I couldn't been more prouder of our residents of this city than I was last night for, A, participation, B, for bringing forward, uh, some very, very, very good, uh, solutions to us. Now, having said that, um, I'm sitting here listening to all this, and, and I gotta say one, one very, what I'm overwhelmingly feeling right now is that we're overcomplicating this. And let me tell you why. I, um, I think it's important for us to really, truly understand, what is, what is the city's responsibility? What's the county's responsibility when it comes to traffic stuff, right? So we keep referring to this agreement that we have with Broward County for, uh, traffic control devices. And if you read that agreement, it will be very, very clear to you what it means. It means anything that we wish to give to the county to maintain, we have to follow that agreement. So, all right, uh, stop signs, you know, we, we say, okay, we, we as a city don't wanna deal with stop signs, we let county do it. So the county says, okay, well, here's our rules for stop signs. But how many gated communities have been in it, have stop signs? Do you know that they are not taken care of by Broward County? No. I'm just trying to say, they're not a part of the agreement. It's, it's not different.
Point of, point of clarification.
No, no.
Point of order. No, hold on. Go ahead.
I, I'm just trying to speak with facts, that if I need to bring the Broward County traffic engineer right before us, he will speak as I am sharing with you. Any, any, anything that we choose to give to Broward County as a responsibility, we have to follow that. If we choose to put a traffic light up, for instance, whatever we wanted to in the city, we could, we're not precluded from doing that. Broward County will not stop us from doing that. But they will say, we're not gonna take care of it. We're not gonna be responsible for it. We have to be responsible. You just heard the attorney sort of allude to that fact just a moment ago, that if the county disagrees with us, then we would have to be responsible for it. And that's okay. If we choose at this point to put, close the road, for instance, that road, if it says on the Broward County Property Appraisers, "City of Pembroke Pines," City of Pembroke Pines does what they wanna do with that road. If they wanna close it, they can close it. Now, the track, our city engineer would be responsible to make sure that it's done in the appropriate way, but it does not require Broward County approval. What we keep talking about, a resolution, is if we're gonna put up signage that says, you can't do this, you gotta do that, and it's going to be, uh, the responsibility of Broward County to put the signage up, and then it becomes possibly the potential for law enforcement to be able to act on that signage. But there are things that we can do.
Point of order, Mayor. Hold on, keep going.
There are things that we can do that is clearly within the control of the city. And so if we decided mid-block, Fourth Street, to put a gate, uh, you know, who wants, you know, let's just say that, a gate that, and we closed it, and make it a dead end from two different angles, we can do it. And then you can open it back up whenever you want. Now, somebody's gotta take care of that. Somebody's gotta be responsible for it. Now, those are logistics that you gotta deal with. But I tell you, I've seen, in my career, time and time again, street closures that are occurring. If you go down Dania, into Dania Beach, and if you go down Sheridan Street, if you are a longtime resident here, you'll know that, once you get on the east side of, of ninety-five, you used to be able to get into Dania Beach on many of those roads, but you know what they did? They closed them off. You know how they did it? They put planters there. And it closed the roads. That didn't require Broward County approval to do that. We put a, or, or somebody, us or Southwest Ranches, put a gate when we, when, at a road in Southwest Ranches, three, that was not approved by Broward County, that was just done. We had the right to do that.
According to the court.
And, I'm just trying to say, Hollywood, just recently, through their rental, through, through a lot of their stuff, have recently just closed off a lot of their roads as well, too. So these are things that I'm just saying, that tonight, you know, we can give, I believe, we can give direction to staff to say, hey, uh, take care of certain things. If it's gonna have to be signage, if we're gonna delegate it to Broward County to be responsible for it, then yes, we need the resolution. But I think that there are, um, other things that doesn't have to be as, let's not believe that everything has to be approved by Broward County. If it is a Pembroke Pines road ownership, it belongs to Pembroke Pines, and what we do with it, unless we wish to delegate that to another authority. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, please. No, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make comment, everybody spoke, I'd like to make a comment. Then go back to Commissioner Cyple. Uh, let me just say, last, you're very right. Last night's meeting was wonderful. Residents came out, told us what they want. Let me just say that COVID is here a year. It could be something else next year. And COVID with buses not being filled is a problem. COVID with parents not loading up their cars with a carpool is a problem. Because when you used to have five, you only got one, and it's five more cars. Just one morning, or one afternoon, go to Pembroke Lakes Elementary, go to Pembroke Pines Middle School, go to any one of those right now, and you will see lines of cars all the way to Johnson Street, all the way around the, this loop that they have for cars. So I think tonight, we have to concentrate on Fourth Street. But I also wanna hear from, uh, Ms. Sumby, but I just want us to move along. And if we could do with the cooperation of the county, I certainly would like that. I would like to see us do a lot more, but I wanna see us do something now, get it done, and then move along. Ms. Sumby, did you wanna make a comment from Fourth?
You're not the one to say this.
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I wanted to say my-
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Lisa Sumby, two oh three, six oh, Northwest Fourth Street, Pembroke Pines. This is a residential street. All of the other streets, Johnson Street, or even by, um, Pembroke Pines Middle School is Douglas Road, none of those are impacting people's homes, in front of their homes. This is the only traffic problem that I've seen with the, with the plan, that directly impacts our home. The other is an inconvenience, and I'm just looking at notes that I have on here. While we were sitting here, I had one of my residents on Fourth Street text me, is anybody gonna do anything about the traffic? It seems to be getting worse in the morning. So obviously, she's not, not aware of the meetings that we've been having. But just to hear, the signage will not do anything, unless you have a police officer standing at every sign and enforcing it. Yesterday morning, the traffic was solid on Fourth Street, like the pictures that Steve had sent. My husband, Steve, was out loading his truck in the morning, and there was a car going west in the eastbound lane. The kid pulled into our driveway, so Steve went over and said, what's up? I gotta let these guys pass, because there were cars coming at him. He says, you can't drive the wrong way down the street. He says, I have to, 'cause if I'm late one more time, I'm gonna get suspended. So I mean, they're not following simple traffic rules. He pulled out of my driveway, he went, there was another car coming, he pulled into my neighbor's swale, just missed her mailbox, and left a rut in her, in her swale. I mean, these are impacting our homes. Sign will do nothing. I mean, we're requesting that the road be closed. If you wanna make it temporary and, and open and close it at hours, I don't think that'll work, because somebody'll just get out and open it in the morning for everybody else to go through. Chapel Trail has seventeen developments in it. Fourteen of them have one way in and one way out. And that's all we're requesting. I mean, we have a little, a little fifty-some odd homes on that side of the, the lake, we have fifty-some on the other, that's Pasadena One. It's a hundred and seventy-four homes total. I think there's sixty and, and eighty-something. We're just asking to be our little private one-way in and one-way out. Years ago, Commissioner Castillo offered me to buy the road for a dollar. So if back then, I could've bought it for a dollar and closed it, what's the big deal of closing it now? Because the police, like I said, are doing a great job, they're out there all the time, but unless they're gonna stand at every sign and, and say no right turn, you know, and make the people not make a, it'll never work. You put a no-through-traffic sign, nobody will abide by it. That road has to be closed, and it has to be closed soon, before there's a head-on collision, or a kid on a bike, or a dog. I don't know if y'all are aware, but last year, I had a car come down the street, a kid, it was late, it was after traffic, he was actually going to pick his girlfriend up at the school, and I guess skip school with her, came barreling down my street, hit our palm tree, and flipped his car. And the only reason he didn't die is 'cause I had landscaping bricks, and the brick slipped the, flipped the car. 'Cause if he would've hit the, the raw palm head on, he would've been dead. So it's just, it's not a through street, it's a residential street, and it needs to be closed like one. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, city manager, city attorney, you heard from a resident. You heard from many last night. I think we need to start doing what the residents want us to do. If it turns out we can't do it, we at least tried. Uh, I don't wanna go into a morph, huge operation. I wanna start and move it by, you know, just do one, do one, do one. And if we can close it, the residents want that, let's try that. Commissioner Cyple, this is your right.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you for all the comments. Um, I, I mean, the, my intent for this evening was to be able to, um, hopefully that my colleagues would support the, the formulation of a reso that would, in fact, start this action that we're talking about. We, we have to start somewhere, and that's kinda the rules of the road, how you have to get started. And, and this is it, but I, I do agree that, um, the language that, that needs to be in the reso, certainly the city attorney's gonna put in whatever he needs to have legally and all that, but the intent of what we're looking to have done needs to be very, uh, very clear in there. And I think that, um, uh, the timing of it is very important, because I just think that, uh, residents need relief now. They, they, they need something now. So if that is the, the, the most immediate thing that we can do is to, um, have a road, a, a road closure, then tell me, tell me that, and tell me how that would be accomplished. What kinda road closure are you talking about? How, how is that, how is that going to be maintained? Who is going, you know, all, all of that that goes in there, and that, and that's fine. We just need to, we just need to know so that there aren't any unexpected, you know, circumstances that come up. If it's, if it's not, if it's not that, that would be the choice, certainly, that would be the choice. If it's not that, tell me, tell me, tell me what there is. Tell me what others that there, that there are. So I, I'm, have always been of that we should certainly look at, um, the most intense first, and, 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 as that is our ask, and let them try to tell us why it can't happen. Again, if, if you're not asking, and you're not specific about what you're asking for, then why waste your time? But if that's what we're looking to do, and I think that's what the residents are asking to do, um, then that's the direction we should go in. I would like to ask, though, uh, city attorney, in reference to, um, something that Vice Mayor said about, about, um, the, the traffic sign in the agreement with, with Broward County on the, on the traffic. If, in fact, we, we, um, we do something on our, on our own, that is outside of our agreement, and they don't agree to what we're doing, we have that responsibility, and then there is the liability that we take on as, as well on these issues, and, not that I'm opposed to doing that, I just wanna make sure that we all understand that that, that that is part of it, and that we are, that we're okay with, with, with how we go forwards with doing all that.
Mr. Sorillo? You gotta hit the buttons. Where's the start document?
All right. So, you know, the agreement, the agreement provides for transfer authority to the county, and, uh, transfer materials, et cetera, when it first came up. Um, there is indemnification, um, for, uh, anything that the county does under this agreement. So if they don't do anything, then they're not indemnifying us. Um, and that's pretty much the, the gist of it. If you go off on your own, now, theoretically, they can say, look, you've given us all the authority under this agreement, and so we're not gonna let you do that, theoretically. But I, I think the, the approach has been, if you do something and we're not doing it, then if it doesn't impact what we are doing for you, you're on your own. Um, you better engineer it right, you better maintain it right, it better be safe, um, because you're, you've got all that liability for that particular action. If, if it's not covered by the, uh, agreement, um, but again, there, there, there is a, a thought process that if it's, something is, um, so objectionable to the county or egregious, that they may say, look, you, you gave us all this authority, you can't go do that at one point.
And, and as far as that traffic agreement goes, the Broward County traffic agreement that we have with them, and other cities, I guess have the same, same type of agreement with them. We've discussed that many, many times up here on this day, as, as to, as to, um, how really antiquated it is, how really bad their criteria is. I know, for example, on Dyke's Road, at the, at the fifteenth street, coming out of, uh, Town Gate, most southern fifteenth street, we've had two collisions there over the last, I don't know, maybe five, six, seven years, where there actually were fatalities. And I have asked for, um, and our city engineer, and we've, and we've gone to see if there couldn't be a, a traffic light, something that there that would, you know, help that traffic on Dyke's that goes so quickly through there, cause these accidents. Their criteria, it wasn't enough that there were two deaths within seven years, it had to be two within five years. I don't remember exactly, but it was a silly criteria like that. So, a, a, and I just wanna say that, for about, um, six or seven months now, um, I have been working with, uh, Broward County Commissioner Barbara Sharif, on reviewing some of this traffic, uh, agreement that we have, and trying to see how we might, um, change some of those very antiquated that don't apply anymore to anything that we do, such as how, how we can, in our own communities, patrol and put things in our own communities, that we best know our own communities, what would work there, what should be there, and not, not be so, um, so, I, I guess scared, if, if that's the right word, how they try to phrase it, that if you don't do this, you know, you're gonna take all that liability, and we're just gonna wipe our hands if something should happen. I think that's a horrible way for a county to deal with a city, quite honestly, on a, on an issue, on an issue like that. But that's, that's pretty much what it, what it kinda says there. So I, I am, um, I am of the hope, again, that this, uh, reso that we're preparing tonight, that we're asking to be prepared tonight, is going to give us the ability to have some immediate relief, where we need to have immediate relief, and that it also, because as was demonstrated and spoken about last night, quite, quite at length, it's not just out here, we need something that's gonna help us all through, the, the whole city. We immediately have issues out here, and we wanna deal with, we, we wanna deal with those. The schools, can we get them to park in the, you know, and off the road, and in the parking lot, and all that stuff. And I did, uh, Ms. Sumby referenced, um, uh, you know, some of the videos that were there, which were, which Mr. Kennedy was able to play last night, and you did see some near-head-on collisions that were happening, you know, and you did see a line of cars, you know, inching, inching their way, and then someone coming in the opposite lane, but going in the same direction, heading west, and just flying by them. So you can only imagine what the possibilities are. You know, it's too much to risk to not take action and to not start solving these problems. We have- We have health and safety issues out there. We have kids that are walking, uh, between cars, on, stepping out into traffic. We can't have stuff like that. We, we can't, we can't have that anymore. So, I am very much in support of how we move forward on this and as quick as possible that we can move forward and we can start giving some relief. It has to be done the right way, um, but we need to do it as quickly as possible. I know a lot of other questions my colleagues brought up tonight are mentioned, um, and I, and I agree, we don't need to overcomplicate it. Let's just start moving and ask, ask. We have to ask. The county said the city needs to ask, so I'm saying, "City, let's ask. Let's ask for what our residents are asking for, and if they tell us no, then let's go back and ask again and go back and ask again until they give us the answer that we're looking for." So, that would be my, that would be my position.
Thank you. We're on a motion in front of us.
Yeah, Mayor, what name?
Fourth Street, including, if necessary, preparation of ordinances or resolutions. That's the motion in front of us. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. To the extent that the Commission this evening would like us to, uh, implement the discussions that we have had with the county attorney's office, which is to make the ask, which is what Commissioner Siple is referring to, to the county, under our current traffic engineering agreement, which dates back to nineteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-four. Uh, we would prepare that as a document, a draft and a doc. We would add the general language that suggests the city is, is taking the first step in a thousand-mile journey. Um, but if you don't take the first step, you're never gonna get on the journey. So, the objective is to get on the journey, make the request, and I think if the, if the county would respond, they'll respond by accepting the resolution. And then we have to, like I said, it's a moving target. It's, it's a living document. As, as, as this Commission perceives and as the administration proceeds with it, with what it wants to accomplish, it would be supplemented by additional data to the county. So, we want this, that, or the other. And to the extent that, that the Vice Mayor has raised a, a correct interpretation of that agreement, he has, which is the fact that you may do things outside the bounds of the agreement, but you do it at your own risk. The indemnification provision that Mike referred to, Mike Cirillo referred to earlier, it gets voided. That's the problem. And it's, it's a huge issue. We gave you a lengthy memo back in twenty sixteen, which I know you're familiar with because we, we talked about it as recently as this, this year again. So, the resolution's only to get the ball rolling, to get the journey started, to open the door of conversation with the county. We would draft it in a global fashion, uh, the specifics of which would have to be supplemented by the Commission at a later time through the auspices of, of qualified, thoughtful, and competent engineering data derived from the city engineer through the city manager to you.
Thank you. It's pretty clear. Commissioner Siple, one more comment, and then we're gonna...
Hey, Mayor. I have a motion. I'm gonna get the phone now. Having a man, Siple, you're up.
Okay. Um, City Attorney, thank you for, thank you for that. And let's say we're, that's exactly how we're moving forward. Can you, uh, can you be a little bit more specific, as specific as you can be, on a timeline to be able to, um, move this as quickly forward as possible to start seeing some action happening?
If the, if, uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if the Commission adopted the motion this evening to draft a resolution to begin the request of the county, it would not have any specifics with regard to Fourth Street or any other street per se, but would indicate that there is a need, there is an objective to be, to be accomplished, which would be supplemented by specific issues or specific items the Commission can dictate.
Well, Mayor, so, so, um, I had made the original motion. So, now I would like to ask the City Attorney, I know that, um, when both you and, and Mr. Cirillo spoke about drafting out, uh, you know, drafting out this resolution to, for us to have, that, that, uh, you weren't actually, you were leaving it sort of broad because then we were gonna go in and start filling in more, more specifics. Would it be appropriate, though, to, tonight, even wanting to have the, the broadness of what you're talking about, to, but, but to be very specific tonight to talk about Fourth Street, to put that language into this as we started initially, to do that ask tonight in this item?
City Attorney?
My, my thought process would be...
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cirillo.
That's okay. If you're ready with some specifics, give us that direction tonight and include it.
I'd like to make an emotion.
My, my specific would, would be that we, we would close Fourth Street.
Yep, well...
That we would close Fourth Street, and that, and that would be the language that I would put in here. Now, do you need to have specifics as to how it'd be closed, where exactly it would be closed?
They can come back to it.
I don't, I don't, you know, I, I wouldn't have that for you, but I don't know that that would be necessary right at, at that point, um, at this point. But you'd have to tell me that, or how quickly could engineer bring something to... Does that need to be included as a backup for, for an ask?
Does that fit into the category of permanent limitations on the use of the...
Well, again, let's talk about it a little bit because the county agreement talks about traffic calming devices and signage and striping and things like that. A decision to close the road is legislative, but...
Point of information, point of information, Commissioner Castillo.
Okay. Over the years, I have gone to Broward County Traffic Engineering at the request of Lisa and her, uh, residents multiple times, asking for three-way signals, ask, asking for a signal, asking for three-way stop signs, asking for all kinds of traffic calming devices. And they have come, they have performed their quote-unquote "warrant" study, and they have said that the traffic in that area...
No.
Listen very carefully, these are their words, not mine. The traffic in that area does not warrant... Okay. It doesn't warrant. It, it, and, and it occurred during the time that, that, that you asked complaint to me about, about summer.
Point of information.
They said no. So, this Commissioner is prepared to say, "It's time to close Fourth Street."
Okay. All right. I'll leave. Did you want to speak back there? I'm sorry, hand, hand.
But, Mayor, I...
Mayor, let me know when I'll be recognized.
Mayor, before, before she comes down, I want, no, go ahead. But as, as both Assistant City Attorney and City Attorney has, has explained to us also, we are approaching this very differently than from before because now we are saying there are, uh, special circumstances, extenuating circumstances, if you will, that makes the ask now slightly different, and I think to fall into a bit of a different category, which may be helpful to us in, in that. Mayor, thank you.
We need your name and address. Hello?
Hi.
They recognize you with the mask.
Two oh five eleven Northwest Seventh Street.
Name?
Anna Press. And thank you for the young part. Um, I live at Chapel Point. We have a community of approximately two hundred houses. I don't know if I've counted them. We're right across the street from Dimensions. They probably have another couple hundred houses. Um, obviously, it's a problem all of Fourth Street, um, but I just wanted to point out, I sent everyone whose email address is on the internet, got an email from me yesterday showing the children who are outside, right, two hundred houses, "We're trying to put our kids on buses." And so, they are out there. And what I want to make sure, I don't know what the definition of "closing" is. I don't know if it means like we, someone mentioned the planters, I don't know. But we have families who live there. I don't want to cut our nose to spite our face. If there is a fire, if there is an emergency, uh, outside of school hours, right, I want to make sure that emergency personnel can get to us. This closure cannot be something to where the roads are blocked and we only have one way in or one way out.
We know that.
I have a job, and so I take my kids to the bus in the morning. I go eastbound on Fourth Street. I'm not going out to two oh eight. Don't throw me in two oh eight. So, I want to make sure that any closure considers Dimensions and Chapel Point and that we are part of whatever that closure is, and that it's not a permanent structure.
It will. Our engineers will, our professionals hit this. They'll be... Commissioner Schwartz, do you want to say something? We're gonna wrap this up soon.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz?
The, the, the Vice Mayor was absolutely correct when it comes to the traffic enforcement agreement with respect to maintaining signage. But what wasn't mentioned, I was trying to get a point of order to, was that if they say yes, a white sticker goes on the back of the sign that says that the sign's approved. That's the reason why you don't see that in HOAs. Unless there's a traffic enforcement agreement entered into by the HOA, which is signed off by our Police Department and our Engineering Department, and it comes here for approval, then we can do enforcement inside the HOAs. This is a huge point.
Moving violation.
This is a huge point. So, if we were to just erect signage that I agree with, um, the commentary is going to be ineffective, um, to curb behavior, unless it has the white marker on the back, the ticket doesn't stick, and Ticket Clinic makes money and we just get more aggravated. That's why the sticker has to be, that's why it has to be approved by the county when it comes to signage. When it comes to temporary road closures, I agree. Commissioner Siple and I asked for it last week. City Attorney, is there anything preventing us from closing the road tomorrow? Is there anything...
City Attorney?
Tomorrow, closing this road?
Yes. Yes, there's a procedure to close a road. You can't do it tonight.
Right. It's gonna require the reso.
It's gonna require a document legislatively to do this on notice, giving the people the rights, and also recognizing, embracing the fact that if the city does that, you need to be really clear that, from an engineering perspective...
Temporary.
Yes, temporary, and it's defensible, and that the engineers can give, can raise their right hand in court if and when the city gets sued over an accident that could occur.
Right.
We have also, as another side, but taken action with Century Village. When they wanted us to bring our police officers in there, the police officers said, "You have to have these kind of regulations on your streets, stops, sign, whatever." We had to go by that. And they went in and they go ahead and they regulated that, and they enforced it. So, tonight, you all heard the discussion. We know what we're gonna do, and I'm ready to move on this, on this item.
If, if I may, if I may, just to wrap up to what the City...
I thought you wrapped up.
Well, the City Attorney responded to me, and I just, I just want to make this clear.
On the record.
We need the community's help to get the information out there correctly and factually. Please have them watch this meeting. That's gonna be the best way, the best source, not a recap of what could've been. Um, I'd like to close, I would like to close the road. Following the City Attorney's guidance, there is a process. These folks need relief, Mayor. I'm happy to support whatever is necessary to make this happen.
I agree with you. We'll see. We gotta see when the reso comes back. We'll take a vote on it, and that's it.
Mayor, my motion that I, that I made, uh, to direct, um, City Attorney to draft the reso, um, discussing all the issues that we, that we've talked about, should also, um, include the discussions that we've had about, um, the closing of, of Fourth, Fourth Street as, as language that's in, in this reso.
City Attorney, isn't it, that, that's good, right? That's, that was part of the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, that's part of what you've asked us to include. We'll include it in the resolution. If the county can say, "Have a nice day," they can say, "That's, that's the reason we talk about." We'll, we'll address it.
But just to be clear, the rest of the reso that we've, that, the language that, my understanding is that the rest of it will be, uh, not so very specific. It'll be more general because we're gonna have to take this reso and, and go into other parts of our city.
That is correct.
And, and as those particular needs show their ugly heads, we will amend the reso and to, I guess, to be more specific to those issues, correct?
To evolve into other, other projects and other specific circumstances.
Right, correct.
Very good.
We'll put it in the resolution.
Okay. Heard a discussion on the motion.
Before we vote, I just want to, I want to ask...
Vice Mayor?
The Commissioner, she would consider just one thing. The resolution element is, as the City Attorney keeps referencing, is to go to the county, and that's to, uh, for those things that we are going to delegate to the county. He has also made specific reference several times, the road closure is a legislative action of this body, not the county. So, I would ask that maybe you would consider bifurcating the two issues where you would talk about the signage and those other things that we would delegate to the county as a resolution, and then also a separate legislative action by this body in regards to the closing of the road.
City Attorney, City Attorney's included.
Was that...
I'm sitting... Hold on. Hold on. Mr. Cirillo, was that the intent of what we're doing? I thought that was.
Well, I can, it can be, you can do separate things if you want to separate it, but either one of them, we were bringing them in as, under the statute for adopting and enforcing such temporary or experimental, right, experimental regulations that may be necessary to cover. So, if the road closure is temporary, while you consider permanent, a permanent solution, which may ultimately be a permanent closure of that, then it could be within the same and with, with the county looks at only what the parts that we need the county for. But if, it's clear to the Commission to do one, just the Senate of the county say, "You work with our engineers on what is covered by the HOA, and we're gonna do a separate engineer to close it, I mean, residents close it." Both resolutions can be brought to you at the same time. It's, it's not a function of our office. I mean, it's not a problem for our office.
And that would then facilitate the closure elements. We don't have to...
The maker of the motion agree?
Don't, don't bring it in with the county. It doesn't need the county.
Maker of the motion agree?
Um, I'm okay. No, I'm okay with that as well.
It's, it's such two different processes in place. Because one, you go to the county, one, we keep here in-house when we look at it.
No, I'm okay with that.
Just one motion.
One motion to do two, the two concepts separately.
It's the same motion we're gonna vote on.
Yes.
All right?
But the, I'm sorry, just to be clear on our direction, the resolution to consider the temporary closure is road-specific.
Correct.
The other one will be road-specific, but also provide language that could be expanded to other locations in the city.
Yes.
Okay?
Exactly.
Call the roll, please, City Clerk.
Thank you.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
It's done, yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Wardis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before you close this meeting...
Well, we're on another subject.
May I?
Though we have one with Commissioner Siple to direct the city about school traffic issues.
That's covered.
Is that covered in this?
That's covered by the...
Why is it separate?
Just, but that's it. That was the item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me just for two minutes, if you will?
Yeah.
Um, I emailed you all today, did not ask you for a response, but at the request of our Special Defense Counsel, Bruce Johnson, from the Johnson and Selma Law Firm, he has requested that I make a request of you during this meeting in connection with the City of Pembroke Pines, adverse the City of Southwest Ranch's case for a shade meeting pursuant to section two eighty-six point zero one one subsection eight of the Florida statutes to begin at six o'clock PM on the thirtieth of September, to be briefed by the outside counsel and by your City Attorney regarding the pendency of the case, the trial of which is to commence on October the eleventh as a date certain and time certain by Judge Carol Lisa Phillips.
So, move.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we can...
I had a motion by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'd like to move the time of the meeting.
I'm sorry?
I need, I'd like to move the time of the meeting.
I didn't hear you.
I would like to move the time of the meeting.
City Attorney, what is the reason for that?
It, well, the, the Commissioner has a time issue, but, but if, if six o'clock is, is too late, we can certainly, I can, you can give me the, give me the time at six o'clock and we move it up sooner we can.
What day is that on?
On the thirtieth, thirtieth of September.
What day is it?
What are you proposing?
Well, i- i- if I, if I may, um, some of us don't work. Some of us have a lot more flexibility in the daytime. flexibility in the daytime. So, uh, Vice Mayor Good, um, the earliest time that you can make yourself available, I'll agree to. I just, I think six o'clock is just way beyond the need because it's just going to be us outside of the required open and closes.
All right, let me ask this, does anybody have a problem with six o'clock?
I do. I, I.
You do?
It needs to be early.
What time would you suggest?
So. Eight AM.
No good for me.
Ten.
Sorry.
Ten o'clock.
Six o'clock is good for me.
I, I have, I do have a difficulty with six.
How about six thirty?
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock is good for you.
Six thirty seven?
I could do 10 AM.
I can't.
Twelve o'clock.
I can't.
I can't do it during the day.
All right, six thirty, I have to.
Six thirty is good for everybody?
Can't do it.
Six thirty works for me.
Seven o'clock good for everybody?
Cannot do it after six.
Can you do seven o'clock?
I cannot do it after six PM.
Why?
Because Mayor, I'm not available. This is not a calendar date.
Well, I'm not available in, in the morning, so what do we do?
Okay, so, so I, I guess at this point, uh, City Attorney, um, is there, are there any other dates available?
Can we do this at three?
I can do three o'clock.
Three o'clock's good.
Okay.
Do we have to be here in person?
It's a shade, we have to be here in person.
I'm, I'm sorry, my question was.
You need a majority in the room in person, I would.
Okay.